Good afternoon and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review Meeting. Ms. Fister, will you call the role, please?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone will be joining us shortly online. Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
And Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is currently absent.
All right, Mr. Scott.
How are you doing?
Oh, Human Rights Interview, yes. Thank you so much. So we want to have one applicant for the Human Rights Commission, and I'm going to ask Wealthy, which is a nickname, and he'll explain it to you when he gets down here, Wealthy Vu, to come on down. You can come to the podium, please. And why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, council. It's great to meet you all finally in person. My name is Melthaker Vu, but translates in English to wealthy, like the money, so I go by wealthy as that is the name that I've been given. I am interested to serve on a human rights council because not just I'm born and raised in Spokane, I have the passion to be a leader, to help our citizens, to help our colleagues, and unite everybody together. Currently, I'm a professor at Chamberlain University, where I work with my students and help them in the classroom and outside with any extra curriculars or with responsibilities to help them better their careers and themselves as humans. I believe that being on council won't just help not just us, but help our community, and I want to bridge the gaps between the youth and helping them be involved with civil engagement with council and to not be scared, in simple terms. I work with young adults and kids and also with adults, and there's a lot of intimidation. I want to represent that. I'm on the younger side of a lot of committees that I'm a part of and where I work as, where a lot of my colleagues are, have a wealth of experience where they share with me, and I do my best to learn from them and share what I can with them with my community, my aspects, my values, and their values. And that's one thing I hope to bring to the Human Rights Commission. And honestly, truthfully, I just love Spokane. I'm born and raised here. I went to Gonzaga Prep, graduated 2017, Gonzaga University 2021. I finished that ASU Law with my master's of legal studies in 2024, and I am a part of the Harvard alumnship with certifications from Harvard. I want to use my experience to help enrich our community and help bring the best out of everyone. Also, a little fun fact around me as well, I will also represent Spokane and Washington as the state pickleball championships and the world championships in November. So coming this November, I'll represent not just Washington State in my division, but Spokane as well.
Councilmember Bingle.
I love your vibe, man. I'm just really, I'm really enjoying this. And I'm going to ask you some pretty pointed questions, but yeah, really, really like who you are so far, so appreciate that. Okay, so my question here, coming out the gate a little hot, is do you think that as in your role as a Human Rights Commissioner, that you should be obstructing federal law enforcement?
I believe that the best solution is to work with our council and work with law enforcement and everybody involved. I believe that the best way to handle these type of situations is to have honest conversations where we can work with law enforcement, policyholders, and citizens as well. I want to bridge that gap and work with each other to understand and break down the differences of what can we do better and what is the concern. I understand that there's a lot of miscommunications in other areas that I've been a part of leadership, and I know that for me, I want to be an advocate of not just human rights and just our citizens, but also our council as well. And to do that, you have to have honest conversations and respect, and I plan to do that if I'm elected for this position.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle, one more question?
I have a couple more, but.
Well, I'll see if, is any other councilmembers have a question? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just really simply would love to understand if you have a priority or any, you know, agenda that you're bringing to this position that you'd like to see kind of move forward, if there's anything like that.
At this time, I don't have any particularly that I have anything on the top of my mind. I believe that we are doing the best we can as a commission, and we're doing our best to not just advocate for those in need, but those that there are situations. I'm here to work with the council to ensure that we represent it not just as our own identity, but as a whole Spokane City Council and our community. So anything that I would answer with would be with our group here or with my colleagues on the commission. And I believe that we always can do the best we can, but we will do, and that is our purpose, is do the best we can, and I would just go with our agenda with what we do.
Councilmember Bingle?
Okay. I don't know that you answered my question, though, on the first one. Should you or would you obstruct federal law enforcement here in the city of Spokane?
I wouldn't obstruct it. I believe it's best to respect federal law and all identities of our government and our policies are with us. It's not right to go against it. It's okay to disagree, but again, respectfully, to have respect from all sides, I don't believe that, you know, we should work on anything to hurt or endanger our city, but to also work together to understand why there's issues and why there's miscommunication.
Okay. And I have two more, if that's okay.
Any other questions from any councilmembers? Ask Councilmember Bingle.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to be discussing inordinance about federal law enforcement and ICE. Have you looked it over and what are your thoughts?
My thoughts about the whole situation here is that, you know, we, as a community, we have to respect our federal agents and also our law. That's why we have the Constitution. That's why we have our rights. Is there always areas that may be difficult to understand? There are, but overall, that's our duty is to respect what we have in our laws. And I think it's important, and I'm an advocate of that, to respect that. I tell my students to respect law enforcement, whether you agree or disagree, but also to do what's best to protect others, but not to incriminate or do anything that would jeopardize yourself or any of your colleagues.
Wealthy, I like you, man. So tell me a little bit more about the pickleball division you're in and how you got to go to Nationals.
Thank you. Sorry to correct you, but it's the world championships, so.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
I didn't mean to demean it. I'm very excited about this, yeah.
Thank you. So I, my story began, actually, in January this year. Couple of years ago in college, I sustained an injury called compartment syndrome. I don't know if any of you all are familiar with it, but I had to have two emergency surgeries where I almost lost my life, and I had to relearn how to move and walk and go through all these injuries. And basically, I had it the last couple of years while traveling and going to school, I had to recover and relearn how to walk and move. And I was released in January from PT and then joined pickleball, where I was able to just keep playing for the love and to have fun, but to connect with others and others in the community, and was able to win some tournaments where I won, I went to the state championship, which is the amateurs division, and then I won state for Washington State against other competitive players that were fantastic across the state, where now I'm invited to play in the world championships, where I get to play the best in the world for my division. I'm in two divisions where I'm playing singles, so I will play against other state champions that won state championships in their division and their states, and then I will also compete against an open division where I can play anybody in the world.
Yeah, well, thank you for your civic engagement, and if you need another friend, shoot me an email, because I think we would enjoy each other, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And Wealthy, we really appreciate, we really do enjoy your energy. I also wanted to acknowledge, thank you for saying you're on the younger side of most people that you work with, so I guess I'm on the other side, but that's okay. And also this whole pickleball thing, I've been challenged by the mayor to a pickleball game, so I should probably hook up with you.
Absolutely.
For some training going forward. Nothing else being said, you'll be hearing from them, and again, thank you for your time coming down today.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone.
All right.
All righty, Council President, councilmembers. A few briefing items for you today. First up for the final agenda for this evening, I believe there was a request to have Chief Kevin Hall come and answer some questions related to Ordinance C.36740.
Council President, councilmembers, good to see you.
I'll just start, I reached out to Chief Hall because I really wanted to hear the position of Spokane Police Department on this ordinance and how it would impact our officers and the role they would play. Again, not setting up expectations from our community that we would not be able to deliver on what this ordinance says and how it would be implemented in our community. So thanks, Chief, for coming down.
Thank you, Council President. And this will be brief, because quite frankly, the scope of this ordinance, from my viewpoint, at least from the last iteration that I had available to me, is very, very limited and narrow. Essentially, as it is written, SPD does not have a role in implementation or enforcement of this ordinance, and I actually have some concerns about it in that it may, just based on comments I'm hearing from both the media and the community, there may be a sense of false security about what SPD can do here. And my other fear is that because of that, when we don't respond in the manner that the community may think we will, it'll cause a breach of trust that we have worked extremely hard to build over the past year.
Sorry? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, specifically, I'm wondering with the naming ordinance, you know, you had, we had emailed a little bit about it, and I was trying to understand where certain activities would fall, but I guess my follow-up to that, that I just hadn't put to you in email form, is whether or not that's going to result in any layoffs of department heads or directors or anything like that.
No, there'll be no layoffs.
Okay. Because that was a bit of a back-and-forth battle about two years ago with trying to preserve a couple of folks over there that, you know, highly talented individuals, and then kind of the arrangement was set up so that we could keep them in place, and so just wouldn't want to see them lost through, you know, some reshuffling of the department titles.
Absolutely. Actually, the end result will be the ability for certain individuals to promote up and creates a better career progression for folks inside the department.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, also, you had said that there really will be no data. There will be no data, no way to really track what's going on with this.
Yeah, once again, from my standpoint, there's no evaluation or data capture contained within the ordinance, and there's no role for SPD to be involved in that, as I read it. So that's why I'm keeping this very narrow in scope. We literally have very little to do with this ordinance, and that's the problem. I think people think we have a much larger role in, particularly in enforcement, where we don't. SPD cannot and will not interfere with federal immigration enforcement.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, to that end, I just wonder, what would happen if an agent that's, you know, identified in here is not being able to access a certain event, and they did, and took somebody into custody in that manner without the warrant? To your point, there's nothing SPD specifically can do. Is there, is there any mechanism for trying to enforce this provision, be it at, whether it's at the city, the county, with the county sheriff, or up higher into the state? Is there any, any way that ICE agents can be, I guess, prevented or penalized for violating this ordinance?
Within the ordinance, and this is probably a much better question for city legal, but we've gone over this time and time again, and that would be through the city to pursue litigation against the federal government.
So each instance, that would be the only sort of mechanism?
That's correct.
Okay.
In our role, if we were called for a call for service, say it's a disturbance, say the event organizer called 911, obviously, we would show up, we would preserve the peace, we'd ensure the safety of everybody involved, but that would be the extent of our involvement.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving now to the draft agenda for September 8. A few items there. First of all, we have Resolution 2025-0071, briefed by Jackson Dees.
I know there were some questions last time, but any other questions on this resolution? This would just be for the ONS to purchase those new signs for people to pick up, stake in their yard.
Thank you for that. On that, did we find a different vendor?
That is good that you mentioned that. Heather Sweet sent me a screenshot from their spreadsheet of, they got four quotes from signed companies, and this was the lowest quote that they got for 1,000 signs, it's for $6,050. The other quotes were $10,528, $13,637, and $14,728.
So I'm going to assume what happens here. I own a wedding business, okay? And in the wedding business, you just add a zero, okay? Because it's a wedding, all right? Now, what I'm assuming, what I'm assuming happened here as well is somebody saw that it was a government contract and then jacked it up, because signs.com or something like that, I'm sure you can find them for cheaper. I'm still irritated by the amount that we're spending on them. The signs are amazing, we all acknowledge that, but that's the kind of stuff that's frustrating. Is there a way that we can adjust that in any way?
I don't know about that. I mean, it might have to be, you know, a department head saying, well, that's not good enough, and, I don't know, going out to RFP or something, but I am not the person who would know about that the best. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Next up, we have Ordinance C.36742, briefed by Adam McDaniel.
Councilmembers, so this is an interim ordinance that will hopefully allow us to permit more childcare and daycare facilities by removing the conditional use permit process that is currently required in some residential zones. So it basically would expand childcare and daycare facilities to all residential and commercial zones. Any questions?
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, just wondering, I have not had the time to do the research on this, but I'm wondering, the state law that was passed to authorize this, does it authorize any other neighborhood uses, or is it strictly this?
SP5509 was focused specifically on childcare facilities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Bingle?
Where were childcare facilities previously restricted to?
They were restricted in R2 zones and R1 zones. There were, I think there's restrictions still in institutional zones, excuse me, industrial zones, but mostly allowed in commercial, but R2 was, R1 were the restrictions.
Adam, I think Spencer maybe, are you here to help him out, Spencer?
I can answer really quick. So childcare facilities are already allowed in the R1 and R2 zones, but they're subject to a conditional use permit, so the real change here is just that we don't go through that extra conditional use permitting process. And then as far as the answer, Adam was right, I think it's only restricted in the industrial zones.
And so to follow up on that, the conditional use permit, what were the limitations there that are now removed?
It wasn't.
By removing the conditional use permit, what is the process now versus what it would have been?
It's more about the process than it is about the limitations. So now, a conditional use permit is a type III permit that goes to the hearing examiner. There's a lot of public noticing requirements, and then there's process to go through the hearing examiner and have a hearing, and then a decision is rendered and all of that stuff. So essentially, that's all stripped away, and now it can be issued just like any other permit. It's just a permitted use.
So now, in theory, in my house, I could come in and say, hey, I'm going to open up a daycare, and then it's just issued, not, other problems notwithstanding, it's just.
Correct. I mean, it would be reviewed like any other permit, but there isn't that additional process of the public noticing and the requirements for the hearing examiner process. There are still limitations on, some limitations on the size and things like that, but it's, yeah, and then, yeah, the state does their own licensing of these, so there is process through the state that has to happen.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just really quickly say, I mean, I think it's a good thing, it's a positive, but the other piece that I think the state needs to look at are the regulations, because a lot of homes in their current form could be perfectly safe, but not necessarily conform to what those regulations are, and it could be very expensive to come into compliance. And so just, I think it's important the state reanalyzes some of those and make sure that they all make absolute sense and can keep the cost somewhat affordable.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Spencer Gardner to brief Ordinance C.36749.
Back here again. This is the extension of the interim ordinance related to building heights in the downtown, so this was, I should have my dates here. I think it was April that we adopted the interim ordinance that removes the height limits downtown. Also made some minor changes to heights across the whole city to bring them in line with recent work that has happened. The interim ordinance expires in September, so this is just an ordinance to extend that another six months. Were there questions? No? Okay.
And finally, for my portion, Tim Zamblin is here to brief Ordinance C.36751.
This is the Marathon Pipeline franchise agreement, which I briefed on the PIES committee last Monday. This franchise agreement is, I'm going to go back and say, over pressure, they're highly regulated by the federal government in the state of Washington, and those safeguards are put in place. Sarah Ness has reviewed the safety response plan for Spokane when the pipeline goes through the city and has given it approval. The pipeline franchise is for 25 years, and it is a long time, and the reason being is these things don't move. We don't want them to move. That's when problems happen. And there's $100 million of general liability and pollution liability that is in the franchise agreement. There's also a franchise fee. It's $25,000 each year, and after five years, it'll go up whatever the CPI is, or 1.5%, whichever is greater. Are there any questions?
Any other questions? Councilmember Klitsky?
Just to clarify, the $100 million liability, was it liability?
General.
General liability, and then the $100 million pollution, those are separate, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Scott Jordan, before he left, I made him review it, so I got that under the wire.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council President. Just a few items for the council to consider for tonight's agenda. Before I start on that note, that if you adopt any amendments tonight, it will result in an automatic deferral of two weeks, because it's to the next regular session, and we don't meet next week, so any defer, any adopted amendment will result in deferral to September 8. The first item to consider is a potential motion from Councilmember Klitsky to defer Consent Item Number Eight to final consideration on September 8.
So I will move to defer that to September 8.
Second.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and is this the one we deferred once before? Yeah.
This is the one, the asphalt shortage.
Right, right, okay.
Any other comment? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions, that is deferred?
Thank you, council. The next item is a potential motion to amend Special Budget Ordinance C.36739 relating to the Quarter III Human Resources Rate Changes and Salary Analysis.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, we had a really good meeting last week with Allison to talk about some of these issues and some, helped educate me on a few things that I didn't know, and perhaps Council President as well, she was in the meeting with us. And I don't like the process where we can add these positions through the range changes, but that is essentially the way it's established right now, that that's allowed, if not encouraged. I want to see us button that up, but in the interest of cooperation, I am going to withdraw my amendment, and we can move forward as is.
Do I need a motion to withdraw? All right?
You don't need one, no. Next item, council, relates to Ordinance C.36743. This is the ordinance that would establish the city's PSAP, Emergency Communication System. You have two amendments. One amendment is from, proposed by Council President Wilkerson, and the other amendment is proposed by Councilmember Cathcart. These are competing amendments, you'd have to pick between the two. They would be incompatible if you passed both of them, so.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I move to adopt the Wilkerson amendment.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I will speak to that and I'll get back to the council, only because we have the buy-in from Policing and Fire. So they are vested in the naming of the organization, the umbrella they will be under. Councilmember Cathcart's spark is very catchy, but I think the ownership of this name is why I'm in support of it. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, my interest in bringing the amendment was because I wanted to make sure that we were not going to have a name that was too similar or even the same as essentially Shrek. That was really my interest. I don't have the bandwidth to be too concerned about the name itself. I can't say that I love the chosen name, but it is what it is, and we'll adopt it and just move forward.
Any other commentary? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions, that is adopted.
Thank you, council. At this point, we just need a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions, that is adopted. At this point in time. At this point in time, Mr. Piccolo, we will need-
20 minutes.
We'll be going to executive session for the purpose of litigation and-
Labor.
And labor. 20 minutes.
30 minutes.
30 minutes. Litigation and labor. We will return at what time, Mr. Bird?
4:00.
At 4:30.[622.41]
Spokan City Council is extending their executive session ten additional minutes until 4:40 PM. No further action is anticipated when they return. Once again, city council is extending their executive session ten additional minutes until 4:40 PM.
Thank you, we just completed executive session. No action was taken. We are now in recess until 6:00 PM.